Good evening. Want to call to order tonight the council meeting for the city of Augusta for Monday, November 3rd, 2025. Would you join me in pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Shane Scott is going to say our prayer this evening.
Bow to me in prayer if you would, please. Dear heavenly father, we thank you for the blessings that you have bestowed on our city. We thank you for the privilege to serve our citizens of this city. Please give the council tonight clarity, discernment, and wisdom as we make decisions that can affect the today and now, and also long term. We ask for your presence and wisdom. In Christ's name, we ask it all. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Shane. Gentlemen, you have in front of you the city council meeting minutes.
I make a motion for the approval of the minutes of the October 20th, 2025 city council meeting.
Second. We have a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes for the October 20th, 25th city council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Move on to appropriation ordinance.
I move for the approval of the appropriation ordinance number 10A dated October 22, 2025.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve appropriation ordinance number 10A dated October 22nd, 2025. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Don't see any visitors tonight that don't have anything that'd be on the agenda, so we'll move on to our business section of the meeting. Our first item is amendment number one to the agreement with JEO dated August 4th, 2025 for the design and construction of Augusta Public Works campus. Staff?
Yes, Mr. President and council, this this agreement is tied back to a previous agreement that you had executed with our city engineer JEO to do phase one of the public works project, which was the salt sand storage building. As you recall, we limited our scope at that time because you hadn't made any final decisions on the actual financing for the broader project. In the intervening meetings, you have actually approved the bid award to the the low interest for that bond issue, and so that bond issue is now moving forward. So we are bringing back the JEO agreement for you to authorize phase two. What they submitted was an amendment number one, and primarily just because of the time difference from the the phase one approval to now, it's not a change in cost or anything like that. It's simply a change in the calendar that they had provided in that original scope document. So they provided it as amendment one, which authorizes the updated calendar and authorizes them to proceed with phase two, design engineering services on the project. With that, I'll turn it back over to you all. We do have our city engineer Brad Shores here. If you want to ask him any questions about that project, otherwise staff will stand for any of your questions.
Does anybody have any questions for staff or for Brad? Okay, entertain a motion.
Move for the approval of amendment number zero one to the agreement with JEO dated August 4th, 2025 for the design and construction of the Augusta Public Works campus and authorize city manager Josh Shaw to sign.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve amendment to number one, number one to agreement with JEO dated August 4th, 2025. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Number two, ordinance number 2253 text amendment to the city of Augusta zoning regulations. Staff?
Yeah, mayor and council, real quick, just give you a reminder, this is an ordinance. So when you actually get down to voting, it will be a roll call vote for presentation of the item. I'm going to turn it over to assistant city manager Kami Schruf.
Good evening. So recently, staff identified some inconsistencies and procedural issues within the zoning regs that we were looking to provide some clarification and alignment with our current practices. So these are just some proposed text amendments that came up through cases that were normal cases that were coming through the planning commission and city council. And as we were reading through the code, we just noticed some inconsistencies that we wanted to get addressed at this time. The first one is to section 15.3 of powers and jurisdiction, and this does relate to the Board of Zoning Appeals. We are looking to amend, to update the jurisdiction of the Board of Zoning Appeals to align better with the city's adopted zoning jurisdiction. The prior language limited the Board of Zoning Appeals authority to properties located just within the city limits. However, the zoning codes cover all the properties within the city's planning area, consistent with the city's extraterrestrial zoning authority. So we wanted, we just thought we could defer to the jurisdiction that's already in the zoning code and didn't need a separate jurisdiction called out specifically for the Board of Zoning Appeals. The second proposed text amendment is to section 15.6, notice of conduct of hearings. Again, this applies to the Board of Zoning Appeals. The Board of Zoning Appeals decisions are final. They do not come to the city council for approval. So in those instances, the way the zoning regs read was that the BZA could issue a resolution. And after talking to Erica, we both agreed the city council has the authority to approve resolutions and not the BZA. So we're following the procedure of Derby, Kansas, in which we will file a decision letter with the Butler County Register of Deeds if a variance or a decision made by the Board of Zoning Appeals is approved. And by filing it with the Register of Deeds, we'll ensure that whenever that property changes hands and ownership, that they're aware that there may have been a variance that was approved on their property. And the final proposed text amendment is to section 5.5, and this is our secondary uses table by zoning district. This amendment will correct a use inconsistency within the C3 commercial district. Dog kennels are permitted in the C3 district, but the associated outdoor kennel runs or play yards were not listed as an allowed secondary use, which created a contradiction within our zoning regulations. So this amendment adds outdoor kennel run and play yards as an approved secondary use for dog kennels in the C3 district. So I will stand for any questions, or I'd recommend approval of ordinance 2253.
Does anybody have any questions for Kami?
So Kami, was this just simply through an accumulation of inconsistencies that were observed and just made note of, or was there any concerns or cases that came across that drove drove the conversation?
Right. So there was a case that came across for a dog kennel and training facility out in the planning area. And they were, so when we went through the use, that area is zone C3, so the use of a, let's see, sorry, of a dog kennel was permitted in the use, but the use of the outdoor kennel run and play yard, which I think those two would go hand in hand. You wouldn't want a dog kennel where you couldn't allow the dogs outside. So that's where we noticed that contradiction in that secondary use. This doesn't change any of the other requirements for a dog kennel, dog run. There's still five acre requirements and setbacks, but they came for a variance to one of their rear setbacks. And then that's when we noticed some of the inconsistencies in the Board of Zoning Appeals wording, because we were mapping out how to take it through the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Thanks. Anyone else? Yeah, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for the approval of ordinance number 2253 text amendments to section 15.3, powers and jurisdiction, 15.6, notice and conduct of hearings, and 5.5 secondary use table of the city of Augusta zoning regulations as recommended by the planning commission.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the text amendment to the city of Augusta zoning regulations. Erica, will you call the roll?
Martin?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we'll move on to number three of our business area. Bid award for downtown concrete repairs. Staff?
Yes, Mr. President and council, we do have our our public work superintendent here. If you have any technical questions, but I'll go ahead and cover the staff report item. We have talked about our desire in the downtown area, just to try to make sure that we're keeping the infrastructure, the public spaces, updated, repaired, not just just for aesthetic and presentation regions, making sure that there also aren't any trip hazard, other sort of things like that throughout the downtown area. Since the the original street scaping project, we've accumulated a pretty sizable list of places where curves have been broken or trucks or vehicles and things have run over them. We've made smaller scale repairs over the years, but you can see the wear and tear on those repairs, which have been broken over and over. And so we were fortunate this year to have a little bit of funding left over from one of our PPP programs, and just given the way that the weather interacted with us, we didn't get to some of the chip ceiling that we would normally do by this time of year. So there was money left over. So in talking through with staff, we decided to make it just a package. Let's put together a package and try to get all of those areas in the downtown that are problematic repaired all at once. So they put together a list. There is a map identified showing all the locations of the various repairs to be made. Staff put together the bid package, I believe, sent it out to nine different vendors and received a bid back from one vendor, and that was Rock Concrete, and the amount of forty-two thousand, two hundred ninety-nine, which is, I believe, actually lower than than we had estimated it would be. So at this point, staff is recommending that we move forward with approval of the low bid to Rock Concrete, try to get them started and get out there ahead of the the weather for this coming season, and try to get it done as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Josh?
Are most of the repairs just on the curbs?
There's, yeah, I'll let Anthony answer. I know there's a lot of curb work. There's some probably some other panels and and drive areas, but I'll let Anthony describe the areas they had picked out.
As close as you can.
It's not on. How about now?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So yes, it is mainly curb and gutter work. There are some four inch sidewalk panels that we're looking at. There were some, some water meter cans that panels that needed to be taken care of. There were some six inch concrete right around Fifth and, well, right by the city parking lot on Fifth and Walnut. We were going to make some repairs there. We're also adding in an eight inch ADA stall in the brick down there at Dalton Palmer Park, just so that it would meet the ADA regulations for that. We picked out several locations, and I'm sure there's going to be several more that we're going to find. We're not going to get them all down there on this project that we're going to do the best we can with the money that we have available and try to take care of the worst of the worst. I'm sure we'll find some things after the project's done. And since the bids came in a little bit lower, we might be able to throw in some few extra pieces here and there. But we're just going to do the best we can with what we got.
Do you have any other questions for Anthony?
Sounds good.
That you were going to put an ADA stall in? Are you going to fix it, any other parts that need need that looked at, or?
Say that again.
Are you going to fix any other parts of the sidewalks that might need?
There there are some parts of the sidewalks. We've got several locations. We added, right there where Josh is showing right now, we added the, we had an ADA ramp installed in the curb line there, and we put in that parking stall. But it is a brick parking stall, and it's hard to get ADA compliance out of that with a half inch rise. And so most of all of the ADA stalls downtown are already concrete for that reason. So we decided to add that one in as concrete. But in the runs, a lot of it's going to be on the bump outs on the corners where vehicles jump the curb and and break the concrete. A lot of those panels are being called out as replacement. There, I think there are a few along the walkway that we found that will probably need to be replaced. But again, we're doing the best we can with what we've got right now, and we got some favorable bids. Well, the only bid back was pretty favorable. Actually came in about fifteen thousand dollars under my estimate. So we can probably add a few things here and there if we need to.
Yeah, these old pictures are not helpful because it's showing all those curbs intact, which are not intact anymore. You can actually see this repair right here on six where semis run over it multiple times.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
I'll make a motion for the approval of the low bid submitted by Rock Concrete in the amount of forty-two thousand, two hundred ninety-nine dollars for the repair of the concrete sidewalks and curb and guttering in downtown Augusta.
Second. There we had a.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Anthony.
Thank you. A motion and several seconds to bid the award for downtown concrete repairs to Rock Concrete. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Moving on to number four, authorized purchase of John Deere Gator UTV with snow removal equipment, a package under Sourcewell purchasing contract. Staff?
Yes, Mr. President and council, in the 2026 budget, you all authorized the acquisition of this Gator utility vehicle for the the Parks Division for snow removal purposes. We have been coordinating with the the vendor that we're getting the equipment from through a Sourcewell contract, assuming you approve tonight, and trying to time it so that it arrives right after the first of the year. So we budgeted for it in 2026. We're hoping to have it delivered around January 4th or 6th as early as possible so that we'll have it for the for the winter season. But technically, you budgeted for it in 2026, so we're not trying to get it delivered earlier. We're just asking you to go ahead and authorize the acquisition, and then we won't pay until it's actually delivered those first couple of days in January. But that gives us the the best chance to get to use it for the winter season as much as we can.
Okay. Any questions for Josh? Entertain a motion?
I move for the approval of a purchase agreement with Prairie Land Partners for a Gator utility vehicle with snow removing package to be delivered in 2026.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the purchase of the John Deere Gator. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, moving on to number five, agreement with Midwest RightofWay to assist with land acquisition through donation pursuant to the Uniform Act. Staff?
Yes, Mr. President and council, this item is, as you know, we've been working with Williams Refinery on the donation of this triangle piece of ground right here for a couple of years related to the upcoming bridge project over the river. And they were finalizing everything with the title company, and the title company had sent me the the documentation for us to move forward on. But we received it after our grant award was announced. And even, I can tell you regrettably that even though the federal money is not being used on the project at all, if federal money is being, sorry, federal money is not being used for the acquisition of this property because Williams is planning on donating it. But the federal law is clear that even the fact that we just got the grant award and federal money is involved, even a donation has to follow the Uniform Relocation Act process. And so it's something that staff could do, but it's also something that experts do a lot. And one of the experts that we use is Midwest RightofWay. They actually worked with us on the acquisition for the airport. They worked with us on acquisitions for the Ohio Street. They have a specialty in in right of acquisition and specifically in Uniform Act compliance. So I spoke with them, told them what we were trying to do, told them that it is expected to be a donation. But what the federal law requires is if the property owner making the donation wants to have an appraisal and have that valued, they are able to request that. And so, yeah, if we were just able to get it done earlier, we would not have to to deal with those components. But the fact that the donation was not wrapped up before the federal award was done, we have to follow the Uniform Act. I would prefer to have folks specializing in that handle it. If they have to do any negotiations, they can, or Williams can actually waive the requirement for an appraisal to be done, and they can just move forward with the donation as we were originally planning to. But if there does have to be any negotiation, I thought it would be good to have the experts that normally do that sort of thing handle that for us. So when I contacted them, I asked if they could put together a proposal with that fact pattern. And what you have in the proposal, it's actually an hourly proposal. It just depends on how much time it takes for them to complete, which may be next to nothing, or it may be a little bit more, depending on whether an appraisal is requested. And the nine thousand dollar number you see is not guaranteed that we actually spend that. It's if, it's actually the not to exceed maximum on the contract, including the potential appraisal costs and the title services costs. We have actually already gotten the title service done, the title commitment letter. So again, that's how they they chose to put it together was on an hourly basis with a not to exceed amount. Our hope is that Williams would just proceed with the donation, but they pursuant to the Uniform Relocation Act, they must be made aware of their rights under that law, and then they can choose how they want to proceed from there. So with that, I'll turn it over to council if you have any questions regarding the proposal.
Any questions for staff?
Josh, two questions.
Yep.
First, from your existing conversations with Williams, are they aware of this new development or this development? I sent some emails on it. I don't know their awareness of the the general federal laws and what they're able to do. All the other times I've talked to them, their plan was to donate it. And it's just because of the timing of it. I can't just move forward with that now without following the Uniform Act. Right. So when I have, if you approve this, I have Midwest notify them, give them the educational spiel explaining what their rights are under the federal law, and then they can choose how to proceed from there. And they could just waive their their rights to the appraisal at that point, move forward with a donation, and we're hardly spending anything on that because the title work and stuff is already done. But if they at least want to see the appraisal for tax purposes or something, then then we'll have to move forward with that part. And. Perfect. Second question to that last half of your statement. Any idea what that timeframe looks like to go through the process with the Uniform Act, with them notifying them, education, decision making? I wouldn't expect it to take very long. Usually, the the time component with the Uniform Act comes up if there's a dispute, and the dispute is normally over value. And so a lot of times, you're you're in opposition in some way to the landowner that's involved. You have an appraisal done, you name a value, they counter, there's negotiation, and if you can't settle amicably that way, then you have a process where court appointed appraisers are put together kind of in bench to to review those values and make a determination. We actually went through that in in some other property that we've acquired over the years. Again, in this case, it is expected to be a donation. That just doesn't change the law of notifying them of their rights, and if they choose to have the appraisal done. So I just, I wanted to have an expert firm that normally does that handle it on our behalf. Perfect. Thanks.
Anyone else have questions? Any discussion? Can I entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion for the approval of an agreement with the Midwest RightofWay in the not to exceed amount of nine thousand, twenty-five dollars to facilitate land acquisition of the property being donated by Williams Refinery in compliance with the Federal Uniform Act.
Second.
Got a motion and a second on the agreement with Midwest RightofWay to assist with land acquisition through donation pursuant to the Uniform Act for property of Williams Refinery. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Motion is carried. All right, moving to matters from and for council. Staff?
Yeah, real quick, just a couple of reminders, and then I'd like to to queue up our our city clerk finance director on a on a unique thing that we've never dealt with before, educate the public on. First couple of reminders, we do have special alcohol grant ad hoc committee meeting coming up on November 10th, and then the same ad hoc committee meeting for utility abatements coming up on November 2nd. So just a couple of reminders for the folks, oh, sorry, 12th, November 12th, not November 2nd. So just a couple of reminders for the the council members who are participating on those ad hoc committees. The third item, I'm going to turn it over to our city clerk finance director Erica Jones, so we can make an announcement to the public and then let them know how we're how we're choosing to handle it at our utility office. So Erica?
Counsel, a few weeks ago, probably about three weeks ago, we, there was some chatter from other cities that had been told by their banks that they would no longer be getting pennies. And everyone was like, oh, we're overreacting. This is way too early. And less than a week later, we were contacted by our bank, and they told us they were no longer getting pennies from the Federal Reserve. And so once they were out of pennies, which they were already out of pennies, so we weren't going to be getting any more pennies from them. I figured it'd take us a while to work through the pennies we have, but surprisingly, we're down to our last couple rolls of pennies, which is about fifty cents. And so we've kind of been looking at different ways to do it. And there was a lot of really complicated ways that involved changing software and things like that. And I spoke to Josh, and he made sense of it really quick. And he was like, why don't we just apply their change back to their bills? So moving forward, what we will do is, once we are out of pennies, we're going to recommend that everyone pay in exact cash, if they're paying with cash, including the pennies. But if they don't, and we owe them pennies back, instead of having pennies to give them, we will apply those pennies as a credit to their next bill. And so that way, it's the smoothest and easiest way to do it. We're not shorting anyone on their bill or shorting the taxpayers any money either by rounding. So this gives them their credit for their pennies. But they're disappearing a lot quicker than we thought they would. And I have heard other businesses in town have made those adjustments as well. So we're not the first, and we surely won't be the last. But once we are officially out, we'll put notices out in the utility office on the counter and at the window, because that's where typically people pay cash. They don't mail their cash in. So we will address that and inform them as they come in to let them know what's going on. But we just, they called me this afternoon and told me we were really close to being out, so I wanted to make sure and share that information.
Okay, thank you. All right, matters from council members. Mike?
Yes, I have a couple of things. I had a call from a citizen. It was talking about a, something was dug up in his front yard. The address is 124 Main Street. And there was a hole dug up, and it wasn't filled back in or something in in the front yard. And he also said that there's some, I guess there's an alley behind, between State and Osage, Maine, and. Maine and, and Clark. Street north of it. Clark. Broadway. Clark. That's Clark. 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 I'm sorry, excuse me. That the alley is real thick and if it's trees and I don't know. There was a complaint made about 128 and a half main, some grass. And a building leaning looks like it's going to fall over. I had a citizen call and ask about a possibility of a handicap parking place in front of the PT. The Phoenix New Physical Therapy Building downtown on State Street. If there could be a handicap parking place put in there somewhere or in one of the, if it could be done.
Can I ask a question real quick on that while we have Anthony here? Anthony, do you know? Maybe you can come up and answer this in the, the bids that we just did. Do you have it broken out in such a way that we know how much that ADA stall cost? In which case we can ask you all tonight if that's something you want to see done. We might just be able to add it as a, as a change order or something under that project when we talk with Rock. I don't know what one of those runs. The thing is you, you'll have ramps and stuff too because you'll, you'll have the curb and gutter. It could be several thousands of dollars to add that.
I was going to say that's like, I've got the cost for the ADA concrete stall. And he's got that in here as just like $8,500 for that. And then you will still have to cut the curb, re-slope the sidewalk. We're probably talking another I'm going to guess five. Just don't hold me to that, that, that you have to do the trundicated domes. You have to hit ADA slopes. That one up there by the park, that one cost us 10 to do more than one of them, but.
And we also just replaced a lot of that concrete down there too?
Yeah.
Up a little bit, I guess. Where's the closest one to that right now?
The, the one that we're talking about adding that's up there by the park right now. There's, you don't see another one till you get mid block.
Isn't there one by McCollum?
Yeah, so there should be.
Yeah, it's mid, mid block.
Right there.
Down here. This is where PT is, like somewhere right in here.
Where Phoenix is.
ET might be this one, is it take over side of space? Am I making that up?
It's right north of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Phoenix?
Yes.
That's actually a recent picture then. Yeah, so you'd probably, we would lose a stall and we would tear out, end up tearing out what we just put in.
You'd basically lose two stalls because the, those stalls there are about 10 foot wide and an ADA stall is going to be 15 to 16 foot wide. So you'd actually have to lose two stalls to put an ADA.
And you said probably about all of it together, maybe 15 grand then?
Probably around 15,000 to put everything in.
Me stalls down is that other handicap? We're just talking five or six, right?
Yep.
Yeah, there, there aren't any others that are in this block.
You're going to update it just down?
Sorry, I can't hear you.
I said you're going to update that one just down from the, was it gate stalls down in front of that one?
Yeah, this one here. So all of this sidewalk work is done. We're just making sure that the, the bricks are converted to concrete like the rest of the downtown is.
So could we make the concrete stall be on the south, south side to be closest to the Phoenix? Be on the south side of the ramp? If on the north side?
Well, the, the way it's set up is that crosshatch area is part of the ADA stall.
Oh, yeah.
Typically for the vans, so they can do wheelchair lifts to get in and out. So flipping it
Right, wouldn't help.
Makes it a little bit more difficult without moving the, the ADA ramp.
And this one was added here because we didn't have a dedicated one for the park. You had some business owners that also moved in here in the shops that had requested it because they had folks who were pulling up in the alleyway, trying to get there that way, which is not set up for ADA either. So this was kind of multi-purpose serving the park and then trying to, to work with the businesses that were requesting that in this area.
In fact, I think that, that section of concrete that we repoured right there, it used to just be a ramp to an old business to actually.
It was, it was a drive entrance, I believe.
We just converted it over to a concrete curb and put in new sidewalk there.
Hey, Anthony.
I'm sorry.
Josh, could you scroll just to the north of the park a little bit? So then we've got one, is it one right there at the depot as well?
Right here?
Mm-hmm.
I just wonder if there's a way we could look at being purposeful on where we place the ADA parking, you know, X amount of ADA parking per so many parking spots downtown or per so many feet or per block or, because the businesses are sometimes churning and becoming new businesses. So if you have every business downtown that wants an ADA spot in front of them, it's probably a little bit more real, unrealistic. So trying to be purposeful on where we place them on each block. Maybe there's a way we could look at that a little bit more closely.
We do have these two on the corners as well. There's, this is right here on the corner, right around the corner from the business and there's one on this side too.
My question, Josh, would also be, don't we also have an ADA transition plan that should include some recommendations for these types of requirements? To your point, Kami, of density of.
Right, but that looked at our sidewalk system and at our buildings, municipal buildings as a city. And so.
But as far as recommendations for density?
Yes, they would have those recommendations and they could help us with that too.
Well, and a lot of those standards are just kind of federal or state standards anyway. And so you just have to check and see what those were, but those standards would have been in place when the, when the downtown streetscape was originally done. So my guess is what's there probably follows the minimum standard, but that's the thing is it's the minimum standard. It, it may not suit your need.
But I, the need could be always evolving. And so to have some sort of consistent plan, I guess, that we put forth to know exactly where those spaces will go.
So my question, Mike, for you, I think since you brought it up, was this from the business owner or a client of the business?
Guy that wanted, needed handicap accessibility. It was an individual that wanted to know why there wasn't.
And that would be, sorry.
A client is what I'm hearing, a customer of the business.
It was just an individual. It wasn't the owner of the business or anything like that. It was a individual that needed the, they, the, apparently the handicap ability to get up from the street, up to curb or something of that nature. I don't know. I just bringing it to the council.
And from a planning perspective, we would look at the market. What did, you know, this business who has a certain clientele has chosen to lease or own, operate their business out of this location with the parking that is there. So it'd kind of be market driven on if those customers can access that building versus the city itself looking to make those accommodations for the business since they can't have their own parking.
I understand what you're saying. I saw somebody walking down State Street that had a stroke. And they had a belt on them, holding them. They could hardly even walk. And I couldn't believe it, you know, I mean, I just, there's, they're using State Street sidewalk to walk on. And the guy was having to be held with this, what do they call that belt, you know, around their waist. It was pretty interesting, to say the least. I had some other things. I talked to Anthony about some manholes. That's all I have.
Okay.
Vice Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Burke?
Nothing, sir.
Bob?
Nothing, sir.
Nothing, sir.
I, I just have one thing. Hey, Josh, do we know anything more about on Fifth and State on the fire escape on that building?
Have to check with Travis again.
Okay, thank you.
Working on it. So, because I went down, I worked with him on it. Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Okay.
Yeah, I got one thing. I, I got a call. Belmont in Ohio going west to east. Somebody told me the light never changes or rarely changes, west to east instead of north and south. So I went that way home tonight and I sat there for seven minutes and it cycled four times. And I finally just had to make a right and went through dominoes and came out. And then I watched another car. I sat there and watched another car sit there. So I, lights. It cycled east to west and it cycled north and south, but it never let the west going east. That makes sense. I was going that direction. West going east.
In front of the eye doctor.
Yeah, right, right. Yeah, right in front of the eye doctor. It cycled three times and never let me go. So I just took a, and that wouldn't let me go. Obviously you can take a ride on red, but it never turned green the whole time I sat there. Let me check that out.
Okay.
That's it.
Jake?
Just one thing. Josh, I just, I shared a email with a link to a video on a street and Anthony, I've brought it, I think, to your attention a couple of times. So if we could just talk about that one off, we don't have to deep dive here, but a street repair that just seems to be going worse, getting worse by the day.
Sorry, are we done? Last thing I have, just a reminder, tomorrow is voting day. The polls will be open. They're scheduled seven to seven. Usually they're open by between 6:15, 6:30. The churches and things, so please get out and vote tomorrow. Next Tuesday, the 11th is Veterans Day. Just wanted to say thank you to all of our veterans that have served for us and those who are still serving today. So thank you for what you do. And that's all I have. I entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. So moved.
Second it.
I have a motion second to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Carried. Thank you. Good night.